Okay, the Smithfield zoning board review, June 4th. It's called your order. The members present tonight, we have Peter Connavalli, Brian Talman, John Hunt. We have Sharon Gilmour here as our secretary. David DeSillo with our board solicitor. Linda Marcello. And Sabino Frank Smith. And us tonight is Tracy Shep. Can we have the emergency evacuation notices, please?
In case of an emergency, there are two main exits out of the chambers. The first is to the right side of the stage, up the stairs, through the doorway and down the stairway out the backside of the town hall. The second is out the back of the chambers to the exit doorway, to the stairway out to the front of the town hall. The men's facilities are through the back of the chambers, past the stairway around the corner on the right. And the ladies' facilities are through the back door of the chambers, straight up the stairs on the left. Please do not use the elevator in times of emergencies.
Very good. Members, have you had a chance to review of any meeting minutes from May 7? So, can I get a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on your agenda is your election of offices. There are two positions up, which would be the chair and vice chair. The secretary serves at the pleasure of the board, correct?
Yes, go ahead.
So, we'll open up nominations for the chair of the Smithfield zoning board. Do I have any nominations for the chair?
I'd like to nominate Richard Levley as the chair.
I'll second that.
All right, Rich has been nominated in second. Does anyone else want to make a nomination for the chair? Seeing there are none, nominations are closed. With only one nomination, we'll take the vote, but we think we know what's going to happen. All in favor of Richard Levley for chair?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
All right, Richard.
Next position is vice chair of the Smithfield zoning board. I'll take any nominations for the vice chair of the Smithfield zoning board.
I'd like to nominate John Hunt as vice chairman.
Second.
Who's second, Brian? Any other nomination for Brian? Any other nominations for vice chair of the zoning board? Being noted for other nominations, all in favor of Mr. Hunt as vice chair of the zoning board?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hunt.
Can you please read Kate's zoning cases before we start today? All that know?
Yep, old business, 25-006. Nicole M. Lapore is applicant and J. Theodore Ray Living Trust as owner. A property located at 292 Wardeman Avenue. Listed as plat 26 lot 27. Seek a special use permit under section 4.3.2.6 and 4.4.2.6. Public and semi-public uses daycare center to operate daycare center in an R20 district.
This is the one applicant. So, the applicant has asked that their application be withdrawn without prejudice.
Question for the solicitor. David, we left the public hearing open, so would it be appropriate to move to close the public hearing and then seeing as being withdrawn without prejudice?
You can't.
So, move to close the public hearing?
Yes, and you don't have to take a motion on the withdrawal.
Okay. I did want to make a motion because I want to add a condition to the withdrawal, if that's okay?
No, there are no conditions to a withdrawal. It just goes away. They have to reapply.
Well, what I wanted to do is offer that, and certainly would be at the pleasure of the board, is that we, with her withdrawing it, we give her six months to potentially come back, at which we, if she remains the applicant and this remains the parcel that for the next six months, if she were to come back, we waive the fee outside of any notification or advertising costs.
She's withdrawn. They have to resubmit like it's a new application.
Okay, fair enough.
You didn't motion, there was motion made to close the public hearing? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That closes that from that case. Okay. The next case we have.
Okay, 25-008. The Jonathan H. Zeno Living Trust as applicant and owner of a property located at 6 Ridgeland Road. Listed as plat 42 lot 244. Seek a variance to deviate from section 6.2.1B accessory uses to construct a detached garage in an R-MED district.
Good evening, board members. Thanks for hearing the case. So, we're applying, as mentioned, we're applying. Oh, it's Jonathan, sorry.
We're going to state your name for the record or we have to swear your name?
It's Jonathan Zeno.
Raise your hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help your God.
I do.
And state your address?
6 Ridgeland Road, Smithfield, Rhode Island, 02917. Okay, so, we're applying for a dimensional variance under the section 6.2.1B for an accessory use. We're requesting the variance, as mentioned in the application, due to the unique characteristics of land. I have my contractor with me today. If there's any specific technical questions, he can help address them. I'm not a builder, but we've gone over the different pieces of it. So, from a land perspective, if you look at the topography of the land, it goes from 250 feet at the top to 200 feet at the bottom. So, it's a pretty significant slope on a one-acre lot. There are very few parts of the lot that provide a flat area where we could construct anything or have a backyard, for that matter. So, one of the hardships that we have is that there's no backyard. And so, to construct a detached garage, it will, in conformity with this current zoning, would put it in our backyard, and we'd lose our backyard for our kids. We have four kids. They like to play in the backyard, so it would definitely be a hardship for them and certainly for us as well. The location we're requesting is also in alignment with the current driveway. We don't want to construct any more hard scape, help promote drainage in the property.
Also, the driveway.
Hard scape, so a driveway, so it aligns with our driveway. Additionally, constructing it in line with the variance would put it about two and a half feet behind our structure, in which case one of the garage doors would be obstructed by the house, to the extent we put it there. So, those are the primary reasons and the primary hardships that we're flagging. There are other parts in the yard where you could construct it. I think you've mentioned in objection letter, put it to the left side of our house, in which case that would cause us to build a 24 by 46 long driveway with a 30-foot pitch, 30 feet from top to bottom. And all that drainage would go right into my neighbor's yard. So, I don't think that's a viable option, being the only other part in the property where you might be able to construct such a structure. There's a couple other points I can address that were in objection letter. So, there's a valuation point that constructing such a structure with a variance would cause a deduction in valuation. Seven variances have been approved by the board in the last two years. 10 Haven Street, two-car garage, 25 Cider Lane addition, 6 Capron Road, 149 Ridge Road, 7 Highview Drive, all ADUs, 22 Wardeman and 47 Swan Road. Oh, I'm so sorry. Where do you want me to stop?
Yeah, so.
All the addresses?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to repeat them?
Yes.
Would it be helpful? There are seven approved variances for similar structures that I'm constructing in similar zoning areas through 10 Haven Street, 25 Cider Lane, 6 Capron Road, 149 Ridge Road, 7 Highview Drive, 282 Wardeman Avenue, and 47 Swan Road. So, I took the valuation of those properties prior to you granting the variance and compared that to the valuation today. And for the properties that had a valuation, there's been a 17.9% increase in value. So, it's hard to, if there's nothing to substantiate the value decline, I only see value increases when someone constructs additions to their property for your neighboring properties.
What's the actual relief?
So, we're looking for 10 feet of relief. So, it's 15 foot in the ordinance, we're looking for 10 feet of relief.
Now, in your property, where your house is in the fence, is the fence on the property line?
Yes.
Right out in the property line?
It's on the property, I guess.
Did you say you're on a one-acre lot?
Just a little over an acre, 1.02, I believe.
So, the garage is 24 feet wide?
24 wide.
That can't be shrunk down a little bit, because what's your garage going to be, 7 feet wide?
Garage doors would be nine feet, nine feet, 211. It's the current, our current garage is 24 feet wide. Fits two cars tightly.
Nine feet's a big garage door, I think. Doors could be small, you only fit in one car on each side, or one vehicle, whatever.
Could open the doors. But yes, 24 feet is the current width of the garage.
And it's 48 long?
36.
36.
And this is a second garage, correct? You have a garage?
There is a garage.
Attached garage to the house, correct?
Yes.
With two.
Two garages, yep. Some of it's projecting forward for the fact that I'm going to have six cars someday, four kids, so the space would be needed in the future.
So, you can't go back and over a bit? I mean, 10 feet seems accessible, and there's only 15 feet there. There'd be five feet left from your garage to the property line.
I don't know if you've seen pictures of the subject property?
I drove by yours.
You drove by it, so there's no, I mean, there's nothing there on that side of the property? No obstruction of views or anything of that nature?
No, I saw that.
Could we move it over? So, if you have the drawings with you of the house, the house is on an angle to the street?
Yours.
My house. And so, when you construct the garage in alignment with the house, it's going, you have to put the front corner over. So, even if you put it over five feet, now you're abutting the house.
So, it can't go back and over a little bit to lessen the asking?
I don't believe so. I can ask my contractor to put his opinion there, because he looked at it, and this is the optimal place, placement of the property.
Is there any intent to use this as an accessory dwelling unit later on?
No intent as an accessory dwelling unit. Storage space, potentially an office, but no dwelling. There's not going to rent it out, not going to be an apartment.
No plumbing, no toilet upstairs or anything?
There'll be plumbing in it for the garage, for the utility sink and potentially a toilet at some point. But yes, there will be plumbing and electrical for the garage doors. That's the current plan.
Mr. Zeno, your property is located in an R-MED.
Yes.
District. And you're seeking relief from side yard?
Yes.
So, the requirement for side yard in an R-MED is 20 feet?
This is a detached garage.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Zeno, is there any reason we did not get a fully-prepared site plan? That basically you took an Asbilly plan for a foundation and then hand drew in a footprint? So, you know, the relief you're requesting could be five, but it could be actually, in actuality, 4.8. I mean, the width of the pen that you drew the plan on could be two feet wide. So, and more importantly, it's not, we have no indication of who, we know who prepared the plan, but what entity is that person operating on it?
From a plan?
Yeah. I think somebody just took a plan from the Asbilly and marked on, this is where.
That plan is, the plan that it's on is a survey of the property.
That's an Asbilly plan.
As an Asbilly plan.
It's an As constructive plan of the foundation.
Okay. Can I ask my contractor to speak on my behalf for that?
Can you bring him up? Have you mentioned this proposal to the neighbor that would be most affected?
Yes.
And what was their response?
We said just come over and talk about it, and they sent the objection letter. That was their response. And we've addressed all the points in the objection letter, including the covenant issues as well, which I believe the letter was passed out to the board prior to the meeting from David Anisi, who's approved the plan and the structure.
Is there any reason Mr. Anisi didn't sign the letter? Approve it?
I mean, I can have him sign it if that's needed. He emailed it, but if he needs to sign it, he emailed it.
Electronics he gets his work, so we need to have it signed.
Yes, my name is Robert Woods. I live at 300 Oldney, O-L-N-U-Y, Keach Road, in Florida.
Raise your hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help your God.
Sir, what's your role in Mr. Zeno's team, Zeno's team?
John and I are friends, and when he was thinking of doing the garage, he called me up, and I went over and visited his property and found that location would be the best location for that. And I have a construction company, and if all goes well, and he still likes me at the end of this thing, maybe I'll have a chance to build this garage.
Did you take any measurements of the property when you were there?
Say that again, please.
Did you take any measurements of the property while you were there?
Yes.
Is that what we're looking at with this sketch?
I looked at that and measured off five feet from the property line and 10 feet. And then I walked the street with a hundred-foot tape, and some of the neighbors objected. Their house is probably 200, 220 feet from that property line, and the elevation was quite high. And there was quite a bit of foliage between the properties. I don't even know.
Yeah, we've been, most of us have.
So, you know, visually, you know, the difference between five feet and 15 feet from that distance, with all the trees between it, I don't think the view would really change much. So, you know, John's hardship that he already articulated was his driveway is already in, and there's no place else to put a driveway. The left-hand side of the house has got to be a.
Very steep.
Yeah, pretty steep. I mean, I was thinking like a six pitch with 22 and a half degrees. I mean, it's just, it's not possible. So, that is the location for the garage.
That's the location. It has to be based on the dimensions that he gave you, right?
Yes.
36 and 24.
Yeah, so the 24 is really, it's the average garage that most people build, because you have, when you have a 24-foot garage, and they are nine-foot doors, you need a nine-foot wide door to put a vehicle in. So, the garage doors are nine foot by seven foot. So, 99 to 18, you usually put in a 10-inch foundation on each side, so you lose 20 inches on that. And then, in the center column, you've got, you know, another 15 or so inches, so it's a two-car garage. I mean, it's a standard garage. If you make it any smaller than that, you had two cars and it wouldn't be real, it was our issue.
So, if it wasn't 36 feet, could it be pushed back and moved over a bit?
Say that again, please.
If it wasn't the 36 feet?
Well, 36 feet is long.
I know. I'm asking, could it be shorter than 36 feet, where you could push the garage back and then move it to the left, looking at it from the street, so as not to need such a large variance?
I don't think the length is really what's in question. It's.
What I'm asking is if it's not as long, can it be moved over to the left more, looking at it from the street, where you wouldn't need a 10-foot variance?
No.
Can't, can't be, can't go back more, moved over? Is there something that's obstructing it?
The driveway, when you walk his driveway, there's a slight incline, and the garage has to sit right in front of you. So, that edge of that garage would be by feet from the property line. So, it's the least variance that he could ask for, that 10 feet.
So, I'm just at a loss there. If it can't be moved over to the left a little bit, if it went back more? And you're talking about the driver, you're going to need to do some asphalt in anyway, correct?
A small amount. If it went back further, you'd have to request relief from that back line as well.
You could make the garage smaller in the back.
Then you'd lose the ability to fit four cars in the garage. Because the car's about 16 feet long, I'm just doing.
So, I have a question related to the application. Given testimony tonight that there's no plan for any accessory dwelling unit, but your application says proposed accessory dwelling unit.
And this is what that's called in the section, is an accessory dwelling unit?
Well, there's a big difference between a garage and an accessory dwelling unit.
This is going to be, there's not going to be an accessory dwelling unit.
If I could address that. In the ordinance, you have a main use, and we're mixing up a little bit of the language. Now, we do have accessory dwelling units, but what he's referring to is a accessory structure to the main use, so.
I'm just reading.
Well, I know, but that's what it is. Garage is an accessory.
So, you would not have any reservations if we restricted, no accessory dwelling unit could go be incorporated into this?
No one to live above it or rent as a separate unit, is that? Yeah, that's, that is fine. You restrict that. Any reservations to you restricting third-party living above that unit?
Related to the floor plans or the schematics that you presented, you made representation that there was going to be an office in storage space and, I think he said, a wash sink, but we don't have anything that depicts what the, how those proportions are within the floor plan. We have allocations, but we don't have anything that represents a floor plan.
We had thought, and in the development of how that upstairs would be, probably down the future, not at this particular time, not asking for a variance, you know, to the interior of the building, it's really the variance as to where the structure is going to be. So, I didn't think it necessitated, you know, draw a floor plan.
Well, I would weigh that that argument goes to what Mr. Hunt had said, is that, is this the minimum relief necessary if it's simply a garage?
Well, I think.
Stand a garage, even modest, could be 22 by 22. I understand that, you know, some vehicles require bigger, but I think even in some of the bigger houses in our community, 24 by 24 is probably more of the minimum relief necessary.
Well, the relief we're asking for is from the property line. You have a size garage.
Yeah, but to establish that relief, you have to demonstrate that the structure that you're proposing represents the minimum relief necessary.
Which is 10 feet from that line.
No, the size of the structure.
And that's the size of the structure we're proposing is 24 by 36.
You want it to be 24 by 36, but is that really necessary? That's probably the better way to phrase.
Mr. Zeno, I think, is it because you're thinking future four cars?
Exactly, the future four cars.
And five children?
Exactly, six children. Not five, no, don't say five. It's only four. If there's not five, we'd be in trouble. Only six, there's four children and two of us are six, so that's 16 plus 16 is 32 of the length, and that's.
That's where you're getting.
That's what I mean, that was what I mentioned earlier. That's the proposed size of the structure.
The garage will have a water supply?
Yes.
What would the line come from to secure the water?
The main, the main house.
Do you know the?
Thank you.
Distance from the edge of the driveway to the property line?
The edge of the driveway to the front of the garage?
No, the edge of the driveway to the abutting property.
The driveway right now is about 14. I don't have an exact measurement of that, but it's about three to four. Because that way, it's pitched, it doesn't, it's not a straight line down the side of the driveway. The driveway is pitched, it's not straight line.
Okay. From the corner of the house to the front-left corner of the proposed garage, you've got 15 feet. Is there a reason for 15 feet there? Can it be moved up at all?
Up from 15 feet?
Yeah. Can that be shrunk down at all, or is there a reason you need 15 feet?
It was for, we were 15 feet so you can get access to the backyard, because there's no other way to access the backyard other than that area. That's why we decided to do a detached garage and leave that space open. That's why there's 15 feet. You could shrink it, you could shrink it down. I think that would change the side offset, it would just change the front-to-back offset.
Because what I'm getting at here is the front of the garage, your drawing says it's about seven feet to the abutting property, but in the back, it's five feet because of the way it's positioned.
Exactly.
And then with the 15 feet from the corner of the house, it's, it just, I think to what Mr. Hunt was saying earlier, it seems to me like there's got to be a way to make this work with all these different angles that we're dealing with here, that if the front of it's got seven feet, the back's got five, can it be tilted just a little bit, shrunk down just a little bit, moved just a little bit over? I feel like there's a way to make this work that's within the parameters of the zone.
I don't believe there's any way to make it work within the parameters of zoning unless you shrink it down to a significantly smaller footprint. There's no way you'd have a two-car garage. It would be one car at most, shrunk it down.
Or not 10 feet of relief requested, maybe five feet of relief requested. I feel like there's a middle ground here that could, that could work, that's not a hardship. That's just my concerns on it. Is it septic or sewer system?
Sewer system.
Can you explain, Mr. Zeno, what this block is on this?
There's an existing structure in the backyard.
This?
Yeah, that's an existing structure in the backyard that we'd have to move if we didn't get the variance.
The swing set?
It's a mounted in.
Is that, oh, I can't.
Mounted into the ground, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not the hardest thing to rip up, but it's certainly more work in. I don't know if there's, we wouldn't be able to keep it in the backyard, it would have to go somewhere else.
It couldn't just be moved over five feet?
Five feet, then the front of it's sitting on the patio. There's a patio in the backyard as well, I don't know if you have.
I did, I looked at the aerial photos and, to me, it looked like there was more room there than maybe not.
It's like it's on top of the patio.
Okay.
But again, it could be moved.
Related to the site plan that you've provided, there is a line in a shaded area that would likely denote what you're going to have for a proposed driveway, but the limited pavement essentially cuts through the middle of the proposed garage door.
I see that drawing you're representing.
So, if you look at the left.
I feel like there's a way to make this work that's within the parameters of the zone.
I don't believe there's any way to make it work within the parameters of zoning, unless you shrink it down to a significantly smaller footprint. There's no way you'd have a two-car garage. It would be one car at most if you shrunk it down.
Or not ten feet of relief requested, maybe five feet of relief requested. I feel like there's a middle ground here that could, that could work. That's not a hardship. That's just my concerns on it.
Is it septic or sewer system?
Sewer system.
Can you explain, Mr. Zino, what this block is on this?
There's an existing structure in the backyard.
This...
Yeah, that's an existing structure in the backyard that we'd have to move if we didn't get the variance.
The swing set?
It's a mounted in, mounted into the ground, so...
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not the hardest thing to rip up, but it's certainly more work. I don't know if there's, we wouldn't be able to keep it in the backyard. It would have to go somewhere else.
It couldn't just be moved over five feet?
Five feet, then the front of it's sitting on the patio. There's a patio in the backyard as well, on the top of the patio.
I did, I looked at the aerial photos, and to me, it looked like there was more room there than maybe not.
On top of the patio.
Okay.
But again, it could be moved.
Related to the site plan that you've provided, there is a line in a shaded area that would likely denote what you're going to have for a proposed driveway. But the limited pavement essentially cuts through the middle of the proposed garage door.
I see that drawing you're referencing.
So if you look at the left edge of the driveway that comes from, we'll call it, if we call it north being up, the northeast corner of the house, that extends to the east and then curves and comes up and connects to the proposed garage. Your scale, if the relief you're requesting, the five feet, is the northeast corner of the garage to the easterly property line, that five feet is longer than the dimension from the corner to where the pavement intersects. Now, I understand that there's a return wall that's probably twenty inches wide, and then your door is there. So essentially, your pavement now, based on the information we're provided, you know, go back to a site plan prepared by a professional, bisects the middle of the door. And I don't see that being realistic.
It's not the intention of the drawing. The pavement will go up to the edge of the garage, and by my measurements, it's about eight additional feet of pavement from where the current driveway sits today.
In which direction will, where will this wall face?
Toward the inside, toward the house, toward the backyard. So if you, it will face west.
What would your closest neighbor be seeing in these pictures?
Just repeat the question, please.
What wall will your neighbor be looking at if there was, if the board approved this?
There's an other side of the drawing. Yep, that side, the right side.
Looking at this?
I don't believe they can't really see it from their house, so no one will actually see that side.
I see. Do you know what the roof line is of your existing house off the ground by chance? Because the garage is twenty-two and a half, but the house looks much higher than that. That's what I'm saying.
The garage won't be higher than the house.
No, I didn't think so. I just don't, if you knew what the difference was, just so we...
I don't have that measurement.
It's a one-story garage with a, I always call it a king-style, it's twelve pitch.
Yeah.
Which allows...
There's a pool room above it.
Golf simulator. My golfing neighbor's here, and he's probably like that.
Do you have any idea how close to your neighbor's house the actual wall of the proposed construction would be from actual wall to the house? That to the property line, I know it's five feet proposed.
But I mentioned the, again, on the road with a tape, from the property line to the house was approximately two-hundred, two-twenty feet.
Easily.
And if the garage is five feet off, is that five feet to that? Substantial distance.
I know this is a zoning hearing. No one asked this question anyway. Does that wall need to be fire-rated within five feet of the property line? A special fire rating, I'm sorry. And some of the roof, or part of the roof?
The garage must be fire-rated, paid for.
The whole garage is gonna be fire-rated? Every wall is gonna be fire-rated?
In the project area, yes.
And the ceiling of the cars?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's no scale on any of the elevations we've been provided. What's the projection of the soffit from the exterior wall? What is the dimension of the projection of the soffit for the eve on the exterior wall?
So the garage is probably gonna be around ten to eleven feet in height. And then the top would be, what, for twelve pitch, we thought it's a picture. Twenty-two, eleven, so about that.
Not the overall height. What is the projection of the soffit out from the...
Soffit out, okay. More than eight inches, ten inches.
So if we restrict the soffit projection to ten inches, that could be accomplished?
Yes. If we're allowing that variance.
The second floor of the garage is going to be restricted to household storage?
Not, no, I'm gonna put an office up there, up there with all the storage. Maybe a civilian stable.
So there's no way to put in just one garage door, eighteen feet wide?
That doesn't meet the needs that I have.
Well, you can get two cars in, and then two more cars in. So why doesn't it meet your needs?
Eighteen feet?
Sure. You put two cars in...
Means six spots I'm looking for in total.
You said four before, four kids.
Four, two in the house, four.
So in other words, this is just to meet your needs, and so you're not looking to try to conform with the zoning limits?
I'm looking to conform with the ordinance, but this is the structure that I desire to build.
But we propose some stuff to you, you should have it all done. But if it's an eighteen-foot door, it's not gonna be three cars deep on each side, right? Two vehicles can pull into an eighteen-foot opening.
I know the measurements of the cars, but it would be certainly tight for an eighteen-foot opening.
But you're proposing nine and nine, so what's the difference? Just the two feet in the middle?
Two feet in the middle and two feet on the right.
Still that two feet on each side. Just the two feet in the middle that you don't have. Would the garage be considered a side-load garage? I see that. Where's the existing garage?
Existing garages? At the end of the house, the left-hand side of existing house.
In the house. I drove by, okay. That's a Google picture of the house. So you also said the swing set can't be moved, because it'll be undefsted. If you look at this, the swing set can't be moved backwards.
I said it can't be moved, can't be moved backwards. No, there's a hill, there's an elevation in that part of the yard. That yard, that part of the yard is not flat. If you walk in, it's about a three to four foot pitch.
So just before we go further, those two documents that Richard has handed around, let's mark those as town exhibits one and two.
I'll do the street view as exhibit one. And the aerial view as town exhibit two.
Are these pictures to us today?
I think Richard, I think Richard grabbed these from GIS.
The wonderful world of Google. It's beautiful. It's like what did it go?
Mr. Zino, I just, you didn't build the house, did you?
No.
Any idea why the house was put so far to one side of this lot? It looks like the lot has up a hundred feet going west.
It's a uniquely shaped yard. So if you look at the, I think someone has the lot map. There's really no other space on it to put it. I think that they could have, could it be moved a little bit? I'm sure they could have, but for some reason, they picked this spot.
Who's the...
I would assume the original owner. The house was built in 2009.
This was actually the model home in this subdivision.
Oh, was it? Okay.
I didn't know that. Probably by the floors, it's a Skopman.
And you are aware, you have a neighbor who's put an opposition into this. So I just wanna...
Yep.
One of the reasons why we're asking so many questions, because...
Yeah, absolutely. I think we've addressed the points, and I have other neighbors that actually support it. So trying to your point, like shrink it down, run this by a lot of neighbors as well, who support the building of the garage and the structure.
Well, they might support building the garage, but they don't know that the issue of the variance, and we're trying to keep everybody happy. We have to understand everybody in the town.
I understand.
Anybody else have any questions at this moment? Okay. All right. I think we're asked for some public opinion now.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, is there anyone here who would like to talk in favor of this application?
Mike Bussum, 21 Crest Circle, Smithfield, Rhode Island.
Mike, you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do. As you heard tonight, I am a neighbor here in Ridgeland Hills, as we call it, part of the same covenant from all the neighbors. We have many of these structures that have been put up into our neighborhood, and all have been only welcomed and permitted. And I would highly recommend and ask that the board considers this. Property values have only increased for us all here. And again, if you have seen the property, you will see just how significant of a slope that the Zino family's property is built into. It is not practical to think that they could move it onto the other end of their property and have a second driveway built in. It would have actually a major impact on the drainage coming down into the neighborhood, which the town is already built into means of trying to help the water to come off of Ridgeland. And I would highly recommend that you look at that and investigate that before you consider asking them to move this. And then, of course, the application states very clearly their request, and we do think it's fair, I do think it's fair, and my family does. And we'd be in full support of seeing the structure put up.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Bussum, could you just let me know where you live in conjunction to Mr. Zino's property?
Yes, I live above him on the hills, so...
Left side, right side?
Left side, yes.
Is there nobody else for in favor? Is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition? Please come up. Please state your name and address, please.
Yeah, Gretchen Yeale, 8 Ridgeland Road, Smithfield.
Okay.
Okay, and just go in last.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
There we go.
So I wrote a letter of opposition. Did you need me to read that, or has the board read it?
Yes, we all have a copy.
Why don't we have that? That's already in the record, correct?
Correct, yes.
We have that in the record already. That's what you can add to that.
So I can add to that, okay. I wanted to say that I am the direct neighbor to where they want to build this garage. To me, if it's a garage and you're adding plumbing, it's probably more than a garage and not storage, first of all. Second of all, I'm opposed to it being five feet, if it's gonna be five feet, we don't really know right now, because this survey is from 2022. Right now, I don't see anything stakes, so as someone was mentioning before, we don't really even know where the corners of this would lie. But say it is five feet from the property line, that's too close to the property line. There's plenty of room on the left side of the house. It's flat, it's level. A driveway could be put in on the slope. There is a soil. But there are other properties in the whole area. Steelwater Road, Ridgeland Road, all have, you know, inclined driveways. It also can then be put around the back of the house, a driveway, to access the garage, instead of requesting a variance. My property has 300 feet of frontage. That's the lot I chose. And just because I have it wooded, doesn't mean I'm not looking at that. If I choose, I have trees falling down all the time. If I choose to cut down trees, have to build something extra. That's what I will be looking at, is that structure. And there's plenty of space on the property to build this garage. I don't understand why it has to be built five feet from the fence line.
Okay.
So that's my main concern. It's too close to the property line. There's plenty of space. It's not following the covenants of the neighborhood either. If you read about the covenants about the driveway, it says there should be ten feet of trees on each side of the property line. When David Nisi built the property, he cleared that for the driveway, which is fine according to the covenants. So there's driveways for certain houses in the neighborhood. But I don't think the intention, the interpretation of that covenant is to go build structures within that ten feet, ten, fifteen feet of the property line at this point.
Okay. Was that, they mentioned, somebody mentioned that this was the model house for the neighborhood? Was yours before his or after, or...
No, that was, so Vasco used to live in that property, 6 Ridgeland Road. It wasn't a model house. He moved in probably a couple of months before us. I would say that, I think it's 5 Ridgeland Road across the street, it's a one-level house. That was more of a model house, because he was building that one at the time. But I mean, the same thing happens on my property. I have a rectangle. If I decided to request an additional structure, I would have to put in a driveway, and that's the expense for doing the project.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Should we enter into the record the letter we were provided tonight dated May 30th from Mr. Nisi?
That's unsigned, right?
That's unsigned.
And it renders an opinion that he's not here to testify to, so I don't think you can submit that. His letter actually has some opinions within it, and it's unsigned. So he either has to be here to support that, so someone can ask him questions, or, because it's more than just fat base of his facts.
Yeah. So to that point, David, a question I've got is, when all the lots are sold, who then becomes the administrator of the restrictive covenant? Is it the builder, or does it defer to a homeowners association?
I believe it would do. So I don't know if there's a homeowners association in this development, but the covenants just remain running with the land, and it's leased by the people. But I'm not sure if there's a homeowners association. No one's testified to that yet.
So, Mr. Solicitor, the person whose name appears on the signature line, which is not signed, in what capacity is, he says he executed the Declaration of Covenants and restrictions. In what capacity? Do we need his capacity? What was his position at the time?
He was the developer.
Yeah, I think, from what...
Says that in his letter?
No, from what Ms. Geely just said was that, she said an essay did all the...
Shouldn't it say what his capacity was when he executed the declaration?
That's why I don't want the board to accept the letter.
So we're not accepting this?
No. It's not signed. The last sentence renders an opinion that no one's here to ask him about. So not prepared to allow this board to consider it.
Thank you. Okay, if we have...
Is anyone else want to speak?
Anybody else in the public want to have anything to say on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Can we reopen the meeting?
I have a question.
Is it too late? That's fine if it's too late. Does a client have anything else they want to say?
Another thing to add is that clause one of the restrictions is ACI's opinion on whether the property is set. So that last sentence being an opinion is what the first sentence is based upon, is in his opinion that it fits in with the ownership materials, topography, as approved by ACI. So it's always his opinion as to whether or not he approves such structure, David Nisi and Nisi Construction, Inc.
And with this application, there's no trees being cut, we can see...
There are no trees being cut with this application. I asked Mr. Nisi... There are no trees being cut with this application. I asked Mr. Nisi his intention for that clause, and it was so that other developers that came into the neighborhood wouldn't deforest all the lots.
We're not going to get into.
I'm sorry.
What Mr. Nisi would have said. So just stick to your side of it because I'd rather have him here to say some of this stuff because it's pretty powerful stuff.
Okay, anything else? That's it?
That's all.
All right, thank you.
I have another question. Maybe we can just talk about this in deliberation. But I think the directly abutting neighbor had some very good points. I'm worried about that neighbor's property value. The driveway could definitely go behind the house. If you drive in from Ridgeland, take a left behind the house to the new structure. Is there a pool or something back there that's restricting that type of construction?
You're not done yet, Mr. Zino.
There's no pool, but if you put a, place a driveway behind the house, there's no longer usable backyard. There's, that's the only portion of backyard that we have is behind the house. There's a patio, a swing set, small deck, shed. Those would all be obstructed by whatever road you decide to construct. So it's not as easy as just constructing a road behind the house.
So what, who owns the land behind your house?
35 Ridge Road.
And what, what, what construction, if there is any, on that property, do you know?
There's a single-family home on that property. I believe there's also a barn. I can't see it from my house. It's a similar, probably 1,000 feet into the woods.
Okay, thank you.
The property behind him is 13.74 acres of land. Okay, if there's no more questions, please come forward then.
Thank you. I just want to make a point with what Mr. Zino just said. When we talk about putting a driveway behind the house, if you look at the survey, I don't have the measurements in front of me, but there has to be like at least 100 feet more than that. I can't measure it out. But if you measure the side of the house to that side, I don't know the amount of land because I'm not a surveyor, but there's plenty of land. It's flat. A swing set can be moved over there. There's area for play on the side yard. The structure could fit over there and it would be all in the property without requesting.
So you're saying from the rear wall of the existing single-family to the rear property line? Is that what you're referring to?
So I'm saying if you're facing the house from the street, to the left of the house is flat land where this structure could be put. I'm sure, there's plenty of room just looking at it visually. I don't have measurements, but where it could be put visually. And if you had to move a swing set or a driveway to go around the back, there's room over there and it would, it would eliminate the need for the variance. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, there's no, anybody else in the public that wants to make any?
Just, can we clarify though, well, there's the issue about there'd be a longer driveway on the left side and then there'd be a drainage issue. What's the drainage issue on that side as opposed to where it would be? Right. So what's the difference in where the drainage, is it because the drainage is going to go a different area? So there's, Mr., stay on up here, sir. You're not done.
The existing driveway has been, it's part of the neighborhood topography. And so that's been there. For a while, the neighborhood's been designed such that the drainage from that driveway swept away. If you add another 24 by 42-foot driveway that has a 51-degree pitch, you're going to have a significant amount of water that runs from that driveway. Right now, it's grass. It's absorbed by the soil. If you get rid of that driveway, you will flood the bottom of Ridgeland Road and you'll cause a significant detriment to those neighbors.
And that's if the driveway's on the left facing the house?
Any hardscape that you build, especially on the left side, because it's such a significant slope, will cause water issues.
So building this structure is going to increase the water runoff on that side of your property too, right?
Building a structure well, but there's ways.
Quite a bit.
To deviate the water, yes.
Is there a plan for that?
Can you propose a permeable driveway?
To alleviate the issue of the runoff from the house, I'm sure once the building official looks at the plans, there could be dry wells that puts in, that would significantly get rid of all of the water that's coming off the house. In the clarification, so let's be perfectly clear on this here, being five feet away from the property line does not have to be fire rated. Closer to the property line, it does have to be rated. Now, you must understand that in a lot of situations, most of the new structures that are being built have three-car garages. Most, okay? At the time when this house was built, the standard was a two-car garage. There's been significant change in design of a lot of the developments. First of all, this, this accessory garage with an office above is almost a standard practice now. A lot of people that work from home so they don't disturb their home, and they build this accessory unit to have the benefit of storage. Or in his situation, he has four children. So you're looking at four potential cars in a short period of time. So he wants the benefit of using the upstairs, this loft area as an office. And I understand that, you know, it being five feet is somewhat, would be a truce to anybody. But looking at the project, it's a garage. It's passive. It's not active. So right at this juncture, that two-car garage will probably be used for storage until his children become 16 years old to put the four cars in, in there. So right now, this is a passive structure. The water coming off the structure can be into dry wells.
Is there a dry well?
Dry well.
Okay.
So that takes care of the water over there. But putting the driveway on the other side of the house, you're looking at significant water coming down and it's natural rainwater.
Well, naturally put a dry well in.
Yeah, you could. However, we always, we want to minimize any kind of asphalt driveways going in for that same reason of being the water problem. So I mean, the question I think that's before us is what, the standard garage is 24 feet. Every garage that's built is 24 feet, especially with two doors, and they're nine feet each. Standard car or a parking space that we, we interpret is nine by 18. That's a standard, that's a parking spot that you should see in, in a driveway or whatever. So getting back to my initial statement, what's happening is he has this garage, a garage is going to be built, the dry wells are going to take care of the water. He's probably here, his wife is going to work from home, not to disturb their home with an office. He's going to go above this garage with an office or storage. And everything right now is passive. It's not active. He's, he doesn't have a business. It's, it's an office. So I mean, I understand all of the, the testimony that I heard from everybody here, but let's get back to the initial statement. It's a garage with an office above, with a bathroom, and I'm sure a wash, whatever. It's not an accessory dwelling unit. Does it have the potential to be accessory dwelling unit? He may have to come back here. But yeah, can it be? I think so, with the housing shortage that we have. Or maybe one of his children down the road want to live with their parent. So all of these things must be taken into consideration. And have we passed garages before? Not that, you know, I don't want to refer to that because every single application that comes to us is different. There's all different circumstances to every single application. But when we get down to the, the actual, why he's here, it's for a two-car garage, 24 by 36, to have four cars of storage and an office above. That's it.
Well, I think we understand that, but our questioning wasn't to put him on the left side of the house, was asking if it could be reconfigured. So when it's not that big of a variance, we have to grant, thinking about the person that's objected to it. So we want to represent everyone in the town.
Yes. However, though, he loses his patio. He loses his backyard. You know, I mean, there, there is a hardship there when you lose your backyard.
The aerial photos.
So let's, let's, yeah, we can finish all that in deliberation.
Yes.
Okay. Let's just see if there's any more questions with him. And Mr. Taman, just keep in mind, everyone for the board, there was a, I know there was a comment made about the least relief necessary. That specific element has been removed based on the adopted statutes about a year and a half, two years ago. So please do not consider the least relief necessary. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, no other comments. Can I get a motion to take this under advisement? Make a motion, we take this under advisement.
Second. Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing in this case.
Okay, 25-10.
Left, right, right. We got to take a vote.
Oh, sorry.
Take it under advisement.
Take it under advisement. We have a second?
Second.
Oh, fair enough.
Aye.
When we take cases under advisement, that means we talk about, at the end of our sessions, then we go through and make a decisions then. This allows us to hear all the cases first and then make a decision. Okay, next case.
25-10. Teresa Valentine is applicant in the Golden, sorry, the Grodin Center Incorporated as owner of property located at 73 Branch Pike, listed as flat 49, lot 61. Seek a special use permit under section 4.3. D. 6 and 4.4. D. 6, daycare center to operate a daycares in the R.A. district.
And the applicant is here?
We, we are not Teresa Valentine, but we are representatives from the Groda Network.
Okay, can you clear out the speaker? Please give your name and address, please.
I'm Carol LaFrance, and my address is 3A T. Parker Road in Foster, Rhode Island, 02825.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as I hope you got.
I do.
Okay. One clarification for me is at the daycare button. Adult, child, which one?
Children.
Okay. That was not asked at all, right?
Okay.
When I drove by the property, took a look at it, and I saw a ramp going up the front, I was kind of like, okay, maybe it's an adult one.
That's, that's for ADA accessibility. Can I introduce who I have with me here tonight?
Sure.
Okay. This is Michael Harris. He's the CEO of the Groda Network. I have, oh, I'm taking that down. Right. I'll slow down. I'm sorry.
P E A R I S.
One more time.
P E A R I S.
I have Brittany.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. Brittany Dalpe, D.A.L.P.E. Boulay, B.O.U.L.E.Y. And she is the director of our community home therapeutic services. And I have Matt Fanuff, Matthew, P.H.A.N.E.U.F. from our facilities department. Okay.
Okay, so tell us what you want to do here.
I will. So, so actually, we are here to request a special use, as you had said. We are from the Groda Network. We have been providing service to children and adults with autism and developmental disabilities for almost 49 years. I don't know how long we have been in this property, but it has been, I'm not exactly sure, but I can tell you a year ago, we had applied for a temporary CO to operate this classroom. We were granted the temporary CO. At the time, and I'm, I'm not well-versed on it, but there were some challenges with zoning and, and I was working with Christopher James White.
Christopher White, yeah.
At the time, he had toured the facility. We were granted the temporary CO, and he had mentioned we would have to come back and apply for the, the permanent CO. So that is why we are here today. This classroom has been in operation since February of 2024. So we are currently serving up to six students in this classroom, six children, preschool age, who have autism or other developmental disabilities. By requesting the special use permit, we do not intend to alter any of the property or any of the environment or area around it. It will stay as is.
Okay. When I went on the website and took a look at, you guys are into an awful lot, yes.
Say that one more time.
Educational wise, you've been to an awful lot with education and kids and everything else.
We are.
Quite a few facilities already.
Yes. We have 26 locations. And I didn't, I'm the senior director.
How many facilities?
26. 26 locations in Massachusetts.
How do the students get to the facility every day?
We current. Yes.
Excuse me.
Can everyone speak into the microphone, right into the microphone?
We need to be quiet in the audience so that we can hear what's, so there's not going to be getting all the information, please.
We currently have four children attending with a capacity of six.
How did they arrive at the facility every day?
Via school bus. They all come in via bus. Yes.
My only concern was that's a pretty tight corner over there where people come flying by. I didn't notice if there was a sign that said school zone.
There isn't because it's not considered a school. We're, we're requesting a daycare, a special use permit.
See, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that corner.
Right. We also, I, I'm, I'm constantly talking to our facilities groups about maintaining the foliage there and cutting it back to allow for more visibility coming in and out of the property.
Okay, I thought it was a little, just before you make the turn, there's another whole huge daycare in that area. How many seven? Group seven, yeah. Different than what they.
So this one is a little bit different in that we serve children with autism.
Just autism.
Just autism. Yes.
Okay.
Is that all your facilities?
Yeah, well, yes, primarily. But some of the programs that I oversee work with children with other developmental delays as well.
Are we got small classrooms like this?
Yes, some are group homes. We have group homes. We have foster care programs. We have DCYF programs. We serve children in respite as well. We have school consultation programs. We have a variety of, range of services that we provide. And we actually have a group home on Farnham Pike. He's in my ear.
Is that a state line?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yeah.
I, I believe that.
Farnham and.
Where's Pike?
This facility is 73 Branch Pike.
Is that, is that drawing that we got, is that accurate for the house?
Yes. Yes.
I guess that was a basement. It was very hard to read it.
I know.
Copied and faxed or something, I don't know.
This is 19, is that a 1991 claim set?
Facilities?
Did you see?
I, I, I'm not exactly sure. Yeah, it was originally a group home.
I can't read anything on these.
I know. We did, we brought them, didn't you bring them in physically or?
Is it 1990?
Yes, yes.
So this is still what it was?
That is correct. We have not, we have not.
Are there any changes proposed?
Absolutely not. No. So nothing will change in terms of what we're providing there now. It will continue to be the same.
Okay.
Won't there need to be some changes with the facilities, the restrooms for children?
No, it's already been done.
Okay. So does this plan reflect that at all?
We just changed the size of the toilet and the sink.
Okay, you're right. How about outdoor play area?
We have a fenced-in area in the back with a swing, a couple of swing sets and ride-on toys, things like that.
I don't see that on any of the drawings or dimensions or plans. Maybe I didn't get that. Maybe I didn't get that.
No, there's no, there's no.
I think to your point, it's similar to the application that we reviewed last month. One of the requirements of the special use application process is the submission of a site plan, and we don't have that, so. Similar to my comments last month, I think what the Groden Center does with autism is an amazing job, and it's something well-needed in this community. But we're being put into a position of making decisions and granting relief where we don't have all the pieces of the puzzle. I know that they're operating under a temporary certificate of occupancy. Is that toll to a certain timeframe, and can that be extended? Or is it, must, is it seized on a date certain?
Brian, under the circumstances, this is an existing use.
Yep.
Okay, so at the time of the issuance of the temporary certificate of occupancy, Mr. White would have addressed all of those issues. Right at this juncture, we're dealing with the layout of the facility and the use, adding the six children.
That's correct, they're already present.
To them.
Yes.
But as far as when the certificate of occupancy was issued, Mr. White would have already addressed all those issues as far as site goes. And what you're saying is absolutely correct. I always request a site plan, especially, but in this particular case, it was an existing situation, it's staying an existing situation, there aren't any additions going on, and the temporary certificate will facilitate the site. Or else he wouldn't have issued that temporary certificate.
Can you just explain what the parking situation is there? Because one of the things I know we talked about was, this is a little different because it's only buses bringing in the children, so there's not cars picking up, so it's slightly different in that type of daycare. But what's the parking arrangement, and how big is your play area?
We have three parking spaces along the front, and then we have a separate side parking area that accommodates 10 or 12, 10 or 12, and.
And it's on the left-hand side, right?
Yes, when you're, yep, when you drive up the driveway, it's on the left-hand side. And then, on the side of the house, there are another three spaces.
Okay. And according to the drawings, it does look like there's a, there's an ingress and egress, so the bus doesn't have to turn around in the parking lot or anything.
That is correct.
There's two entryways.
That is correct.
When does the temporary certificate of occupancy run out?
So, it has already expired, and that is why we're here. If we don't have a decision tonight, we'll look to extend that temporary CO as we make considerations going forward.
Oh, building officials here, in case he can comment on extending it if there was an issue or not.
Another question too, are there any restrictions in, where are the restrictions placed in that certificate of occupancy, temporary certificate of occupancy?
Jacob Neff, 612 Pike, building official of the house with him. So, the certificate of occupancy would be subject.
He's good, okay.
Be subject to zoning approval, then they would be able to start building permit process to get a full certificate of occupancy. I mean, I had conducted the review on the TCO. It's a state-run, it had been a state-run daycare facility. It'll be subject to annual school inspections by both building and the town's fire marshal, but that would be subject to zoning approval first.
Is it temporary, can you extend the temporary?
Not typically.
And Mr. Conavall had a question regarding restrictions. Restrictions?
Yeah, yeah, were there any?
Restrictions placed in the temporary certificate of occupancy?
Not that I saw, there were no stipulations attached, just an expiration.
And the daycare is sanctioned by the Department of Children and Family? The Health Department, what department of state?
Rhode Island Department of Education.
So, when you get your, hopefully you'll get your final certificate of occupancy, do you need to supply that State Department with the copy?
Yes, we would, we would.
It looks like the backyard's all fenced in?
It is. Yeah, and then there's a small side yard and a front area too, but the backyard itself is fenced in. With, right, so when Mr. McWhite had come through, we had to make all of the changes at that time, so we put safety locks on various fence gates and signage, we had to amend some of the sprinkler system as well to make sure everything was in line with coding. So, it's been, it's fire, you know, the fire inspections are done yearly as well.
Everything's okay. Okay.
How many employees are there throughout the day?
I'm going to defer to Brittany on that.
Hold on, hey, you got to swear your name.
Brittany Boulay, B.O.U.L.E.Y., and my address is 237 New Land Ave., One Socket.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Very good.
Depending on the day, we'll have between like six and 10 employees, but no more than 10 at a time.
So, is that at least one per student, right?
1.5 per student.
Five per student, okay.
1.5.
Oh, 1.5.
Oh, no, 1.5 students per staff.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have any questions? My only concern was that corner, but looking at your plan here, it looks like you've got enough of property where you can cut back some of that vegetation.
Absolutely.
So, you got to ventilate the site, because otherwise your head's going to be on its way.
Yes.
Very quick. Very good, okay. If nobody has any questions, I think we're all set, because we're open up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to make any, anybody speak in favor of the application?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody, nobody speak in favor? Does anybody want to speak against the application? Then please come up.
Eileen Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R., 76 Branch Pike, Smithfield.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I'm just trying to understand the daycare aspect of it. We live right across the street, we've never had any issue or anything with the Groden Center, they've been there for a long time, but I want to make sure that, is it limited to six students? What does daycare mean eventually? Is it expanded? Or I don't really understand what the variance is for in terms of daycare.
I think daycare is, we'll call it an umbrella of a term that encompasses various modalities of care during the day. The Groden Center is, their specialty seems to be autistic.
I understand, but are they limiting it to six students, or will it?
So, to answer your first question, what they're asking for is a special use permit. A daycare is allowed in that zone only if you come for this board and ask for a special use permit, and it meets the criteria that the board thinks fits with the overall town. As you heard in the other project, we're trying to match things for the town. So, that's what they're actually asking for, that's the variance they're asking for, a special use permit. In terms of the limitation of the students, that was stated it was going to be four, no more than six. The board can always consider that as part of the requirement in any decision, that that's what it remains. You don't worry about the scope turning into children other than autism, however, I'm sure they can come back up and answer your question soon as you're done asking the rest of your questions.
Okay, that is my question, that it would, what will this board say limited to in terms of their requests?
Thank you again, Michael Paris, CEO of the Groden Network. It is not our intention to have a large daycare center at this location. I'm sorry?
No, he's good, we've already done that. Yep, once.
Yeah, no, it's not our intention to have a large daycare center, I mean, no more than, I mean, at any point in time, you're restricted in the space, the existing space that we're in right now. So, I would say upwards of 10 if we were to do anything, but it's limited in size of, in terms of the size of the classroom.
So, maxed at 10, you're actually about six.
Yeah, right now, we're at capacity at six, and that's just fine for us.
And does the scope remain autistic?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, the scope remains. There will always be autism and development, and children with developmental disabilities, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Is there anybody who wants to speak, say, we did it in favor? Anybody want to speak against this application? Okay.
Motion, public hearing.
Motion, public hearing. Make a motion, we take it under advisement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Next case.
25-12. Nathan Aiello as applicant in 375 Plutnum Pike LL, CEO's owner of property located at 375 Plutnum Pike, listed as flat 36 lot 17, seek a use variance under section 4.3. F. 6 and 4.4. F. 6, microbrewery to operate a microbrewery in a planned development district.
Good evening. Nathan Aiello, 446 Central Street, Oroville, Rhode Island.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, tell us what you want to do there.
My business partner and I are looking to open up actually a nano brewery, so we are looking for a dimensional variance on top of the use variance, I believe is the proper way to do it. Nano brewery is a much smaller situation than a microbrewery would be. My business partner, Anthony, was going to go into that, and then I'll follow up with the actual brewing process and how we will maintain environmentally sound practices.
Okay, step forward. David Atis, please.
Good evening, Anthony Gerard, 16 Fawn Trail, Talland, Connecticut, 06084.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Members of the board, thank you for having us tonight and giving us the opportunity to present to you. We're here, as we said, to request a use variance to operate a nano brewery. While your current ordinance provides guidelines for microbreweries, it doesn't yet account for nano breweries, which are significantly smaller in scale and impact. We believe that our proposal represents a unique case and would appreciate your thoughtful consideration. I wanted to start by telling you a little bit more about us and what makes us different. Okay, sorry. I wanted to just start by telling you a little bit more about us and what makes us different, and then my partner Nate, who is our head brewer, is going to talk a little bit more about the brewing process, sanitation, and our plans to minimize waste. At Uncommon Beer Brewing, we believe in crafting high-quality, small-batch beers and seek to create a welcoming community space to enjoy them. And I really want to stress the word "community" because we hope to form a strong connection with the community and with our customers. As I mentioned earlier, we intend to operate as a nano brewery, and our expected annual production will be less than 200 barrels per year, which is a fraction of what is allowed for a microbrewery. We believe this has several benefits, including minimal production volume leading to lower environmental impact with less waste generation and lower energy consumption. Further, we expect limited deliveries in commercial traffic due to our smaller scale. In doing our market research, there is past precedent for other nano breweries in the state which are currently operating in other towns, including Crook and Current in Pawtucket and Lops in One Socket. We feel that Smithfield is a great location for a nano brewery as there are currently no other breweries in the town or the immediate surrounding area. Our proposed location is very accessible with ample parking and good daily traffic. Our primary revenue source will be from taproom beer sales, and we hope to create a welcoming atmosphere for craft beer enthusiasts. Our concept centers around being uncommon while creating an ever-changing experience for our customers. Unlike traditional breweries with fixed offerings, we're going to embrace rotational model while brewing in small batches and offering only around six beers at one time. Think of us as the crumble cookie model for beer lovers. Every visit is a chance to try something new and cultivate excitement in wondering what comes next. We also believe that our model encourages return visits, which not only supports our business, but also supports the local economy and nearby small businesses. And again, small batches mean small footprint. We plan to operate efficiency with low-volume brewing that reduces waste and keeps the focus on quality over quantity. Our taproom will consist of a small brewing area with a bar and tables for open seating. We will adhere to all building codes and guidelines on seating capacity. To begin, our taproom will be open to the public on a limited schedule, just Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to start. Hours to be determined, but we intend to operate as a modest, community-focused venue, not a late-night establishment. Our limited hours will allow us to monitor guest visits and adapt our operations responsibly. We hope that our nano brewery will serve as a gathering place, not just a business, and we're committed to fostering a positive atmosphere for all of our guests. We plan to implement sustainable practices, including recycling spent grain through local farm partnerships, using efficient brewing methods to conserve water and energy, and keeping our carbon footprint minimal through limited production and distribution. We plan to work closely with Smithfield's building, fire, and health departments to meet or exceed all applicable codes and standards. We believe that our proposal represents a responsible, low-impact use of the space that will enhance the local community. In conclusion, we're proposing a local, sustainable nano brewery that operates at a significantly smaller scale than a microbrewery, adheres to all building codes and standards, and enhances the cultural and economic vitality of Smithfield. We respectfully ask for your support in granting this variance so we can bring this community-focused project to life. Before closing, I just wanted to quickly tell you why we picked the town of Smithfield. Nate and I both have a personal connection to the town. I spent my early childhood living in Smithfield with my grandparents, who are residents for over 40 years. My first job as a teenager was at the old Almax in Apple Valley Mall, and I'm a graduate of Bryant University. So, we have a strong history with the town and a strong connection, and we really hope that we can bring this forward. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Nate, thank you.
Still have your green stamps? You still have your green stamps?
So, questions that I have, is the, so basically, is there any canning or bottling going on?
Not at this time.
So, right now, it's just going to be a tap-off?
Correct.
And serving beers locally?
Yes, sir.
How's the operation? I know you kind of went limited, but what does limited mean? Like, what time are you thinking maybe?
I was thinking, well, we were both thinking possibly right before lunch, so maybe the 11 o'clock hour till 7 or 8 o'clock at night. Again, this is not going to be a late-night facility, this is just a gathering place with good flavors.
I did notice that the parking lot itself is, so you're in the number 14 spot, I guess?
Correct, so we're right underneath DeAngelo's, right up against that back wall where their two dumpsters are. That would be, that would be the spot that we're seeking variance.
To me, I did notice like the parking lot is not really marked well. So, I'm looking at, you know, parking spaces right now, it looks like you're going to need at least 12?
I think there's 49 back there, and there were about six or seven that were blocked with dumpsters that have been moved since the last time that they came and grabbed them. I was there yesterday. Yeah, yeah, there should be.
Yeah, I saw some of that.
Yep. It is also, excuse me, it is a first-come, first-served basis from what the lesters have told us.
Knowing that it's a new business going in there, I believe one of the requirements may be that some bottles are put up because anybody driving down could drive right in, and that, obviously, we know that happened.
Sure.
Sabre shop, and I believe that's been mandated not within the town or anything.
Correct.
So, that's something that they're going to have to take a look at, because, you know, you're going to be, I assume that the other shops that I saw down there are not operating at nighttime by any means.
I don't, I'm not sure what time the pottery place is open till, and I think that the printer in the back is daytime as well.
So, maybe this would be something that the owner of the property would have to comply with. with, but there should be some bottles put in place so nobody can drive right into the place.
That actually is something that we, that we spoke about last time when I was there with the leasing agent.
Okay.
Because we did speak about that situation, unfortunate situation that took place, and though it would be very difficult for that to happen, just the placement of where that side wall is and where cars would be parked, right? Yes, but
You never know.
But yes, I know, I know, I know.
You'd never know.
But we did, we did
Accidents happen.
Absolutely.
How many people will you be able to seat in your taproom?
Twenty-nine. Well, we're going to follow whatever the fire marshal tells us and whatever fits fire code, but I believe our plans have about twenty-nine seats.
Right now, the seating show in twenty-nine.
But I, I think we were hoping for about thirty-five, with standing. We're going to have couches as well, just trying to place things at this point mentally. We're just looking at an open slate right now.
Okay.
So we get buildings.
So there's no food being served, right?
We will have prepackaged offerings.
Okay.
Chips. We will have water, soda, chips, pretzels, things that are prepackaged that we will be bringing in, but there will be no
Snacks, basically?
Yeah.
So, excuse me, is, I'm not saying no, because that was a question, is there, is there a kitchen in there?
There is not.
Okay.
No. It is three concrete walls and some windows.
So the only alcohol being served is your own brewed beer?
Correct, there will be no outside alcohol permitted inside.
Mr. Chairman, if I could direct a question to the solicitor. The parcel lies in a PD zone, which is planned district, so under section five point seven point one, point A, all planned development applications shall require planning board approval as a major land development. Is this? Is this better served being, and it probably would qualify as minor land development now because it's less than seventy-five hundred square feet, but is this application better served going before the planning board as minor land development with a unified development to handle?
So I can have Mr. Gentile probably answer that also in terms of how he interpreted whether this should go to the planning board instead, but I would say this is just simply a use variance to determine if there's a use that can go into this location. I wouldn't classify this as a development in some way because it's already an existing structure. They're going within the, within that structure. They're not really developing this project any further.
The applicant also believes it's a dimensional variance. I don't understand that.
They can speak to that, but to give you an overview is better.
So right now, a lot doesn't meet the minimum size for a PD development?
No, it's, they're seeking a different type of variance.
So, so shouldn't the relief also include legal non-conforming for the lot size?
That's not what they're seeking.
Are they, should they be seeking that?
No. This is part of a larger overall development structure, so the, that's all.
So is the planned development approved by the planning board at one point?
The DeAngelo's building? I think so.
No, the whole complex, the whole plaza.
Sorry, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I was riding my bicycle in there when Star Machine was there or something, so it was already there. Star Castle, Star Castle.
How many, how many bottles of beer, twelve-ounce bottles out of one barrel?
Two hundred and fourteen?
Depending on how much loss I have with my spent grain, yeah, right around there.
I did the math.
Two, two Two barrels will be one of the smallest nano breweries in the state. Crooked Current operates at a half of a barrel in Pawtucket. Those are the only, the only folks, Nicole and Jason, those are the only two people that I know that brew that small.
Can you, why don't you explain, did you explain your dimensional variance?
I believe the dimensional variance is because we're, there's only an ordinance written for a microbrewery and not a nano brewery, so we're looking for a dimensional variance because it's actually smaller, is to my understanding.
Is it that, yeah, I think
I think Chris
We do have some notes from the zoning official who had determined, who did define that the microbrewery would be where you would sell the beer off-site and because you're not
Correct.
a brewery, but our, but our regulations do not provide for a nano brewery, just a microbrewery.
Correct.
So I believe the board needs to determine if we, you know, prove as a microbrewery to make, we could make a restriction that you don't sell beer off-site.
Off-site?
No, nothing off-site.
And you don't have any intention?
Unless I carry it out in my hands, I've got no way of.
And there's no, obviously, no intent, is that, is there no intention for you to do that?
I, I think that, at, right now, there is not, just because of how small of an operation that we're doing, and that we really want it to be a community thing. If there was a restaurant nearby that down the road possibly wanted to, I know, I'm just speaking off what I'm hearing through grapevines and things, but the place upstairs is going to be serving beer and pizza. Let's say they wanted to have some, a local beer, we might talk to them about it. This isn't in the plans, I'm just trying to think, you know, outside, but, but no, there's definitely nothing.
So if we did make a restriction, then you would have to come back to us, to the board?
Yes, whatever you guys want, we can do, sure.
We did miss the place. Looking through the windows, it did look small, I mean, it's not that big, so
It's not, it's really not, yeah. It says fourteen hundred square feet, and I did the math, and it doesn't come to fourteen, but I guess the fourteen hundred square feet that they say that the unit is also has their common ground built into those numbers as well, is from what the leasing agent told me. I think there's about
I think I measured out from eleven hundred feet, eleven, eleven hundred square feet.
Something like that, yeah.
I mean, sounds interesting?
It is interesting, I promise.
Right now, the, the piece of the property is vacated, so it's a good
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Of course. Just wanted to say one more thing. So actually, we recently met with one of the other tenants in the building and told them about our plan, and they were very supportive, and we wanted to also say that we're very supportive of small business in the area, and we really, really want to encourage that throughout the community. So that's one of the things that we would be working towards.
And also, I've been in touch with, I'm not sure if you have heard of Lucy's Dog Biscuits? They use breweries from around the state and prepare dog treats and resell it, and we will actually be
Dogs love beer.
What's that?
Dogs love beer. They go to retrieve it, that would
They do like the spent
Suck a glass dry if you can, if you set it down long enough.
But I have spoken with the owner, and we are going to be donating our spent grain to that cause, to help
Oh, good.
feed dogs and also be visiting a couple of local farms as well, because cows actually eat spent grain. There's no alcohol in it, don't worry, I'm not getting Cows are all loopy. But, yeah, so we're going to do our, our best to make sure that it's, you know, we leave as, as little footprint as possible, including our cleaning methods as well.
So, so to that point, obviously, it's a non-residential use, so you fall under the requirements of the wastewater treatment, pre-treatment program.
Yes.
Have you had, started those discussions, and I guess, how, how is the pre-treatment program working out for the facility? Where's the sampling location? And then, does your operation require a modification to how that process works now?
There are consistently updating ways to eliminate the BOD waste that does go into the wastewater management facility. In fact, one of the cleaners, the main cleaner that I'll be using is Star San, and I included that as well in the attachments. That actually eats the microorganisms that go into the waste, wastewater management water system to help alleviate some of that, because we know that, well, we don't, well, when we clean and we put the water into the drain, it won't be going directly into the drain, first of all. I have filters that are going to be set on top of my floor drains to further break down any of the trub or anything that does escape, or, I'm sorry, get, get cleaned through. Where the cleaning solution is one ounce of this acid per five gallons of water, so it's twelve ounces on a whole, on a whole mess.
I, I think I raised the point simply because you, you started discussing, your discussion by saying it's a nano brewery, so
Correct.
the volume of wastewater that you guys are going to generate is minuscule
Very small, very small.
given the capacity, but I, I think it's more of, I think we want to make sure that these i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Totally agree with you. We want to, we want to make sure that we don't put all that stuff in the water because, but with the sanitation processes that have been coming out, and especially over the last couple of years, with the, with these chemicals that are biodegradable and environmentally friendly, it just keeps improving. There's just, as, as it comes out, we're going to do our best to get rid of it. None of our trub is going to, trub is what the yeast extracts when it, when it mixes with the sugar to produce the alcohol. Trub falls to the bottom, and that's very high in the BOD. So we're going to be taking, removing that before we wash. So it's almost a pre-rinse.
So the, the solid part of the byproduct?
Yes.
What sort of volume is generated per, let's say, per barrel?
Two hundred and fifty pounds for two barrels, because we have a two-barrel system, so it's about two hundred and fifty pounds of spent grain.
So, so where does that, where does that, where and how is that stored until you dispose of it?
Buckets or into the big moving waste barrels is where those would be, and just wait until Lucy's comes by or one of the farms. I can't, I, I couldn't give anybody an exact answer on when we'd be able to start or how that's going to happen until, like, we got answers, so.
And then the other question I have related to the brewing process is, my perception is that there is some form of, it's, it's a heating process, correct?
Correct, we're going to be using electric.
So that would obviously generate condensation. How does, what is the air system or the mechanical system that doesn't then do anything detrimental to
It is a
either the other occup, you know, the other tenants that are in the facility or
Well, we don't get to a boil until we're using just water, so, and that's going to be a closed system, it's not open, but we do have ventilation and on brew days, which will not be when people are there or guests at all, and probably going to be Mondays and Tuesdays would be brew days. We have ways to vent and pretty much just open the doors and turn on the fan just to kick it out. That's what most breweries are working on, that's why when you walk in, you get that smell, it's kind of
All the servers would have to go through the appropriate alcohol?
Yep.
Training?
I have mine, yeah, yes, I have my, it's a two-year license.
Biggest shift, how many employees?
It's going to be myself, Anthony, and our wives. So just the four of us.
You know
No problem.
The seating is based on the number of seats, but there's also the component of
Right.
the staff at the, at the biggest shift, so.
I don't, I don't think two, more than three people would be working at a time. Maybe for grand opening, we'd have all four of us, but
So I guess you're saying you anticipate your growth to maybe be in this facility up to thirty-five, thirty-six seats, so there'll be twelve.
Parking spots.
Let's, let's say, worst case, your wives may want to stay home one night to
Sure, yeah.
So let's say you, you hire a couple of employees, so maybe it's another four spaces, so sixteen total.
That would be, yeah, that would be another twelve, twelve people, but yeah, that would be
I know it's not the most aesthetic area
Sure, but that's okay.
Are there any thoughts about maybe at some point allowing seating outside?
Not at this time, just because if you're aware of the property back there, there's really not much there except for
Yeah, and you guys are on the side of it.
Yeah.
And the topography doesn't lend itself, but again, to, to some of the comments that were made earlier is, you know, in twenty-twenty-three, we had that horrible accident that occurred down at Apple Valley Mall, and, you know, the town took steps to kind of preclude that.
Sure.
But I guess where I'm going with this is, how are we going to allow your use to be able to accommodate ADA people?
We, I'm speaking with the, the leasing agent now, and it's actually in our, when we do sign our lease, that we will be having one of our bathrooms be ADA compliant. I do have handicapped people in my family. We are getting a ramp put in, that is also one of the stipulations in our lease, so we will be accommodating all ADA. And we have a, we have a, it's a door
It's like a door and a half.
Yeah, it's got like a little
Door in, yeah, it's about four feet.
Yeah. And just, just, just to add to that, I'm, my day job, I'm a travel agent, and I'm actually an ADA advocate, so I'm well-versed on what needs to be and how we, how we can accomplish everybody being comfortable where we are. Like Anthony said, we want this to be a community thing. My first job thirty-four years ago was at Dave's, Little Dave's, I think that was before Smithfield Commons, but I was at Little Dave's as a bagger at fourteen.
Are you guys the brewers?
I'm the brewer, yes.
So you have to brew two days a week to produce enough, but to get like through the weekend, or will there be a surplus?
Yeah, it depends on how many people we can get to come through the door and how mu, how fast we can go through. But, but two barrels is, I mean, that, it's a substantial amount of, it's a substantial amount of beer.
So, so how much time from once it goes through the brewing process to where then you can, I guess, the aging process?
Sure, so fermenting, right, is usually about two weeks, and then if we force carbonate, we can probably have a beer ready in about three and a half to four weeks. What we've noticed by the beers that I brew, they like to sit a little bit longer, their flavors just come out different, so.
So kind of the last area that I kind of want to address on, and it's one of the things that I have a concern about, especially given the limited hours that you're
Sure.
you're operating is, we're in kind of the retail hub of the town of Smithfield.
Right.
And my experiences with microbreweries or nano breweries is, the times that you typically see your highest volume of customers are the times when Smithfield Commons will be stressed the most for its demand. Right now, and I don't see this changing, is Levy Lane is a right-out only.
Correct.
So those patrons that are going to want to head either east to North Providence or to get on two ninety-five, how are we, what is the thought process and how this is going to work?
Well, they can go back out to forty-four and make a U-turn.
Can't do a U-turn up there.
Or, okay.
I would, I would think the easiest path, because I've done it myself, you come out and you hit the light and you go into the mall, into the shopping area, and come back out with the light.
I didn't want to say anything about a cut-through because there's clear signage that says it's not allowed to be
I've done the same, I've done the same thing many times.
Yeah, because that was one of the, I think, we want, in any way, shape, or form, want to preclude, because we live in a very litigious society and alcohol and people who operate vehicles is
Totally understand.
It is very difficult
Yeah, I don't think we want to
Take away stupid though, doesn't
You know, I, I don't, I think we want to avoid where we potentially impart liability on
Sure.
someone who doesn't necessarily want that
There are other places in that plaza that do serve alcohol as well, that
Yeah, I know for a time, they, they had, there were bottles that went across that entrance, they've been since removed, but
Right.
Busy times of the year, there's a lot of foot traffic that
That's what we're hoping for. We're hoping that some of those husbands get dropped off when the wives have to go to Kohl's or Target or something, and they don't want to do it, so.
Just one last thing.
Sure.
When you're brewing, that process, is there any issue with like smell that would affect other businesses, like say, DeAngelo's or
No, just my son, my son complains about the smell, but that's, that's just about it, no. It's really, it's not, it would be, whatever you smell is going to be just brew smell that would stay in there, it's just not going everywhere.
It's going to become a nuisance to the surrounding.
I don't see how it would be. I don't know any brewery who has had any kind of negative impacts.
Right now, when I talk about anything outside, right?
Correct. Scary out there.
You'll be serving the beer, do you guys have to be tip-certified, are you
I'm, I'm tip-certified.
And what was in this location before? How long has it been vacant?
Man, I don't know, there was an, I think it was an eBay reseller before us, but it's been, I mean, at least a year. And then before that, I mean, there was a scuba shop there at one point, and a bunch of, bunch of, bunch of spots been in and out. Well, we also believe that us going in there, and from what we've seen in market research, just in, I go to a lot of breweries, I'm friends with a lot of the owners in the state, it, it brings more business, you know? A lot of people want to be around stuff where people are having a good time, you know?
Just want to remind the board that, you know, I, I, kudos to you both for, you know, embarking on a new business in some of the economic times we live in, but ultimately, this is a use variance, and our charge is to say that what you're providing, what you're And our charge is to say that what you're providing, what you're proposing is the only alternative as there's no other beneficial use to this property. And that is a very big hurdle to kind of have to overcome. But um, we'll see how kind of things play out as we go through the deliberation process.
Okay. Sure. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody in the crowd that would like to talk in favor of this application? Anybody here that would like to talk against the application? If not, we will close the public hearing. Make a motion. We take this under advisement?
Second.
All in favor? You all set? Okay. Okay. I make, can I need a motion that we go and enter into deliberations?
Second.
I make a motion that we go into deliberations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do you voting members tonight justify regular? Voting members tonight would just be the five regular?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'd be Richard, Linda, Ed, John and Frank. But everybody can deliberate. You just can't.
Can't vote.
Correct.
Okay. First case, originally wrote. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve the application as applied.
Which one?
Huh? Did you call out which case you'd deliberate?
I said originally wrote. Twenty-five dash eight.
Make a motion that we approve the application as applied.
Second.
Okay. Your application is second. Let's have some discussion. So I have a problem when I look at this, this case where the homeowner didn't look at the restrictions, just planned what they wanted and then hoped to fit it in. But when it didn't fit, they're coming to us for some relief. We have another town resident that has an issue with it. I think I proposed several alternatives to maybe shrink it a little bit so that we could have moved it over a little bit and maybe kept both of those people happy. Didn't seem like any of the things I talked about were viable. I understand that garage's standard is twenty-four, but that doesn't mean it has to be twenty-four. It could have been twenty-two. It could have been one door. They could have shrunk it down a little bit. Just didn't think there was any work in it with that resident. And we talked about the water not in his plan, right? I mean, it's going to create more water that's going to run off there. Was to say it's not going to run on the property next door. Then what happens?
That was the, the idea of the dry wells.
I know, but.
Coming off the house.
He didn't propose it. He didn't say he was going to do it.
But we have a building official here that when the plans are submitted to him, he's going to address that issue because all water, as we both enforce, must stay on that property.
I get that.
So I mean, that would fall on, on the, the building official in his plan review.
Actually, it falls under the soil erosion committee.
Okay, on the soil erosion. But still, ultimately, it's the building. And he's, he'll probably refer to dry wells coming off a gutter going into a dry well to significantly.
The town has a process that any application that disturbs X amount of square feet must appear before the soil erosion committee. That's under the purview of the town engineer. There's a process. They go through that process.
Well, I'm sure he will.
Some of the other things that if this board sees fit to grant this application is that there is no provision for an accessory dwelling unit unless it comes back before this board. And that I do not see a need for water to be in this structure. Electricity, yes, but water, no. The proximity of the proposed structure to the existing garage, we're adding where now we've got to make a connection between the house to the sanitary sewer system. And, you know, the, the argument of we don't want to disturb anything kind of doesn't hold water. So I'd like to see it be restricted, that there's no water connection allowed. Electricity, I'm fine with. You know, you have to power the building, but I don't want to see, my preference would not to be see anything related to plumbing in that building.
So you mean just to clarify, water as in like where you have to drain?
Domestic water.
On an outside faucet spigot?
Correct.
He, that'd be okay.
No.
No.
No, I.
But he's coming off his house.
You still got, you still have sewer connection. So the water that's generated has to go somewhere. So now we've got to disturb to get that back to the house.
Okay. But getting back to my initial statement, that this is a passive situation, that this office doesn't have employees, it has him there. How much water do you think is going to be generated into the sewer with one bathroom and a wash sink? At what time? I mean, it's one person.
But well, to your point, Ed, this started out, it was just a garage. Then further into the discussion, well, I'm going to add an office. And then it became, well, I might want an accessory dwelling unit. So I think if we add some restrictions, we control the dialogue.
Well, the, the, the whole reason that we, we already restricted it, that he wasn't going to have an accessory dwelling unit up there.
Yeah. I, I just think that there's way to, to John's point, there's way too much of a moving target on this.
I don't agree with you on that.
I, I, I really don't agree with you because it's a garage. Let's go back to the basics. It is a garage.
And you point to the water. If it's a garage, you believe you house your cars in it and sometimes you want to wash your car. So I think it makes sense even to at the very least have spigots out there so that he could possibly do that in the future, should we grant it.
So I, I mean, I raised my concerns, I, you know.
It's an, it's not an excessive ask. I don't think it's an excessive ask if, if he's already commented and given his statement that he was not using as an accessory dwelling unit, but only looking at it as accessory dwelling, as an additional unit on the property, the garage being accessory.
No, it's a loft area to a garage.
Right.
And how many houses are being built with a loft area above the garage?
We've taken other applications.
Many, but those houses tend to be done in the dimensional requirements. This is an exception.
Not necessarily true. We've had, um, we've had applications come before this board for garages that did not meet um, the requirements, had to get variants that we've approved, um, probably for about the same amount of space, in fact. I can remember one clearly a couple of years ago, not too far from me, that we did that for. Actually, it may have been about the same amount of space. And in the neighborhood, the space between the abutters was much less than two hundred and twenty square, two hundred and twenty feet is what I think was provided to us. I understand and I understand the abutter and I took that into, you know, consideration in my approval. The, the, the accessory dwelling unit being where it's being placed, I don't, you know, it's, I feel comfortable where it's, the, the height of the house, the unit, the garage itself is, is going to be smaller than that. It's not as high as the existing home. It's two hundred and twenty square, uh, two hundred and twenty feet from the, the abutter's home. And, and I, while I understand the five feet and we should take that into consideration, and I did, I also took into consideration the distance between that and the abutter. And, um, and I didn't find that to be excessive. Nor do I find it to be excessive to ask for water in the property if he's going to use it as a garage.
I've raised the concern.
And the other thing is, when you were talking about the, the overhang, okay? Now, the interpretation of the overhang, the setback is not taken from the plane of the house. It's taken from the foundation area to the property line.
But it all, it all is relative to the abutter's concerns.
But each.
But it's twelve inches, or even if it was sixteen inches, it's not taken from the plane of the house. It's taken from the foundation.
So the five feet from the, from the foundation wall, the exterior wall to the property line, now take off at eighteen inches, as you said.
But that's for, that's for aesthetics. That's for aesthetics.
It's still a perception for the abutter.
Okay, I can understand it being a perception. But as a design, a, a, a design professional, how many houses have you seen or any garages have you seen without that, that, that suffering? How many? How many?
I don't count.
I read you.
I'm basing what they provide.
I understand, Brian. I understand. So let's get back to my initial statement. It is a garage.
I think his main point was that the applicant didn't want to disturb the backyard.
Exactly.
Didn't want to move the swing set.
Or his patio.
Or he's going to have to disturb the backyard to connect the sewer to the house and connect the water from the house to the garage. So it's, we can't move the swing set because we don't want to disturb anything, but we're going to have to disturb the property. That's, that's the point.
Okay. But do you realize a water line?
I don't, I don't have a problem with the sewer going in there. I, my issue is that I believe the building could be, could have been moved. They just adamant that, no, it's not happening. It's going to go in this place here. I'm pretty sure that building could be moved. The garage could be a little bit smaller, one door.
And, and I do understand your point, John, but I don't, I, I do also take into consideration with that the amount of footage between, you know, space between the abutter's home and the garage itself. It's not like they're right on top. He's not right on top of them. While, yes, we had, we, you know, we're looking at five feet. He's not even close to being, the garage is not even close to being on top of the abutter's property, in my opinion. And also for children in a narrow backyard, you know, I, I'm sure, you know, you have any children, but in a narrow backyard with four children, there.
That's a hardship.
It is a hardship. You're trying to preserve as much place space for them. So now you're moving the, you know, the existing. I know it's a swing set and it's, 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 it seems minor, but when you have that type of yard with four kids and if that's the best, you know, it seems to me to be the best spot based on the left-hand side, not working with the problems with the drainage. I'm causing even more of a problem for the neighbor.
Right. And I don't think the topography is, is wanting to turn, to put, put that garage on the left-hand side of the house. I mean, again, it is a garage with an office above each storage. That's all it is.
Yeah, connecting to the existing driveway. So it's.
For what we've, what we've approved in the past, the way things are going now, having accessory dwelling units, I mean, you can put.
But this is not an accessory dwelling. This is accessory structure.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is that, you know, we, we can have a hot twenty lot, a house on it, and they can turn the garage into, into another house.
Yeah, they can build.
To me, this isn't that unrealistically requirement. I mean, five feet, we have granted similar, similar system situations to fall for garages. Granted, uh, the, there was nobody opposing it at the time. Actually, it was a three-car garage that we approved, but the neighbor had no issue with it. We also had people come before us. We asked them to go back, rework the plan. They did.
I will say though, it's much.
So it works both ways. And the height, height isn't higher. We had an application before where the height was like thirty-nine feet. That one ended up, ended up being approved and built because of the size of the properties and the property wealth of all, everybody in that neighborhood. Again, nobody came forward. I think the biggest issue here that we're trying to get around and everything is that we have, we have a disagreement. We have a neighbor that doesn't want. But we have, if we have a neighbor that does.
Okay, but if, if in fact, that, that the property, that, that neighboring property.
I have a question.
The home was thirty feet away from that property line, I wouldn't be in favor of it either. But it's two hundred feet.
Well, the feet, correct.
Two hundred feet.
And property is actually sloping down towards the house.
Exactly. So I mean, logistically, looking at it at logic, the hardship is one, why disturb the backyard for his children? We're talking about his children. We're not talking about, you know, his stuff. I mean, it's his children. They enjoy the backyard. And he doesn't want to disturb his home with an office, again, to just have a little office above this garage. Okay. I, I mean, that, that's my feeling. I mean, it, it, it is what it is. And I, I don't see an issue with it. And like I said, if the, 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 the next door property was twenty feet or thirty feet away, yeah, I think I would have a little bit of an issue. But not to worry about it. And like I said, the building official is going to take care of the, the water coming off that, that garage.
I think looking at the, at the piece of property, you're going to have an evaluation that's going to be higher. Which also raises up the rest of the neighborhood. This is not a detriment to the.
No, you're, you're looking at over an eight hundred thousand dollar home.
Yeah. Now you're going to, now you're going to turn around from a fifty, a hundred thousand dollar.
You to it. So you're going to a million dollars to this house.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a concern for the neighbor. If the board chooses to approve this, and I, I can't vote because I'm an alternate, but I can discuss. If the board sees fit to approve this, I want mature trees planted on that neighbor's side because that neighbor will be looking at a blank wall five feet from the property line. And I'm also concerned about putting into the decision, if the board chooses to approve, no expansion of the use of the accessory structure can take place unless the owner of the property, whoever it is, comes back to design board.
Mr. Chair, I think there's already a brush between the property, trees and such.
Yeah, yeah. There, there's already property. There's already foliage and everything right along the property line right now.
Well, I was, I was going to talk about that also. So did I, did I mention trees or greens? I did. Yeah. So mature arbivory because they grow higher and wider. And at least some of that wall will be camouflaged by the arbivory.
The problem that we have with that, with that request is that we only have five feet between the property line and the building. So we don't have enough land to go.
The neighbor's going to be looking at a blank wall, Mr. Chairman.
At two hundred feet.
Pardon me?
At two hundred feet.
That, that doesn't make any difference to me. But that doesn't mean anything to me. I, I think it's too close to the property line. You know, we talk about hardships for the property owner, but we don't talk about hardships for the neighbors. And my concern is for that neighbor.
No, I understand. We had a local neighbor that is concerned with it and we had another neighbor that was former.
I can, I can understand both, both issues.
One of the, one of the neighbors was a direct abutter and is part of the notice.
Correct.
Was not.
Correct.
So there needs to be some.
No, I, I, there's some gravity there. Yes.
So I just want to, I agree with Mr. Hunt's view on this. I feel like there could be very easily some kind of middle ground here that could make both, uh, could make the property owner happy, stay in conformance, or at least not have to have this significant of a variance. So obviously, I think we're, you know, this is, this looks like it's going to be a contested vote. Is there, if the vote doesn't go through, is there still an opportunity for the property owner to amend the application to something down the road that would be approved?
It's a repetitive petition.
I, I think if it's not approved, I think.
If it's not approved, they have to come back with a, what would be class substantially different or significantly different plan. It's one year.
It's one year.
Well, yeah, they, but if they have a substantially.
Change, you can come back.
Yeah. If it's substantially changed, you can return. Yeah, if it's substantially changed, you can return.
... indicating what the change would be and the fact that we applied another application.
Well, so what this board has done in the past, yes, there's some sort of document submitted with the application showing what's different. And then before the board hears the actual application, or as part of hearing the application, they can make that vote that it's a substantial change. And then hear the rest of the application. That's how we did it with, um, I know we did that with somebody else.
The three-car garage.
Yeah.
Okay, David, so let's go, let's, uh, go one step further. What if the applicant appeals this at Superior Court? Now, you very, you both know the outcome at Superior Court. With a vast amount of money that the, the, the economy's gonna spend, you have to go to Superior Court?
We do, but.
Okay.
But that's our concern, then we should just approve everything.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm not saying to approve it. But let's get down to the very basic issue. It is a garage, and we passed, we passed others.
And we asked others to re-read their plan, too.
That would probably be part of the appeal in front of, in front of a Superior Court judge.
Court will look at the four elements you have to consider. The hardship, the consistency with the character, the uniqueness of the property. Got them right here for you. And then the court's gonna look at the facts that were heard and make that decision off of the written zoning decision. The hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land, not the general characteristics. The hardship is not the result of prior app, action of the applicant. Granting the variance will not alter the general character. And then, uh, also that, if it's not granted, then there would be pretty much no other, uh, way for this person to accomplish something that they need. It's, it's a little more wordy than that.
Maybe they fit two of those.
What we do, like, you have to look at the reasonableness of it as well. The reasonableness of where it's placed on the property. I think if it were to be placed to the left, it, should it have, be able to, that would alter the characteristics.
Nobody proposed on the left here tonight. No one's talked.
Well, the Abutter did speak about it. The Abutter did.
Yeah, but we, we.
No, no, but I'm taking her comments into consideration. Because she did, she did speak against it. And she did propose it being put on the left-hand side.
We did not.
No, I know we did not, but I am taking her comments into consideration. And I think that after hearing that, that that would alter the characteristic of the neighborhood itself, because it's unusual. It's separate. I think this is a better overall, um, place for it. It, it makes more sense. And it, overall, I don't think it's going to alter the neighborhood. I would, I would actually be probably upset if I were a neighbor and saw this, you know, the garage just placed to the left-hand side, when in fact it seems more reasonable to be better placed where it was proposed. While there is a five-foot, um, setback, I, I understand that. But I also understand that there's 220 feet between that and the Abutter's property. So the reasonableness of that makes me willing to grant it, not deny it over a very large amount of, um, space between this, it being placed while there's, our code says, you know, okay, we're supposed to give the least amount of relief necessary, which I have taken into consideration. Had it been right up against that property, I would be denying it right now. But because the reasonableness of it being 220 feet from the Abutter's property leads me to say, that sounds reasonable. I think it makes, it makes sense here. And overall, it doesn't take away from the play area for the four children. It doesn't alter the characteristic of the neighborhood itself by placing them, if we were, if we could have been done to the left.
I, I think it does. I think it, I, I think it does alter the character of the neighborhood. Um, if, if I drove by, I don't see any other detached garages. This would be the first.
But we.
So it's not in harmony or in character with the neighborhood?
But that's why we're here. They come before us and we have.
Well, you can't say, though, it's in harmony or in character with the.
We have had other applications before us proposing this type of a structure.
In this area?
We have approved it.
In this area? In this neighborhood?
In Smithfield, in the town of Smithfield.
Every neighborhood is unto itself.
I don't agree, Mr. Conneval, just because he may be the first application government before us in this neighborhood. Doesn't mean it should never be done in this neighborhood.
I don't agree with that at all.
Well, that's like saying you're gonna restrict Ridgeland Road neighborhood from ever putting a, a, a detached garage on their property because it's never been done before. That's why we're here, so they come before us. They bring their application before.
Okay, I understand. I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm just giving m- m- my response to your, um, statement that's in character with the neighborhood, because it isn't, it would be a first.
Everybody's opinion here is, is, uh, well-taken and everything else. I mean, this is why we're here. This is why we have this board here, is to hash through these things. Sometimes they're not easy, sometimes they're tough. All right, we've had a bunch of different, difficult ones here and there, and some of them very easy. This is not a very easy one, because there's a lot, a lot of play there. We need to speak in one of the time to make sure that we don't miss anything.
I just wanna speak on, I, I know Mr. Hunt did reply to you. But I know that I'm also not considering, I don't think we were asking for anything, the driveway had been left-hand side of the house. You look at 15 feet off the corner of the house. The front of the garage is seven feet from the property line. The back is five feet and it's 36 feet long. If it's shrunk down a little bit, um, if it's just tilted a little bit, if it's just moved over three feet to the left.
What's that really going to accomplish? I don't understand what the difference between eight feet or five feet is when there's 220 feet between the properties. And also, I wasn't saying that the board was considering it to go to the left. I was, I said it again, I'll clarify it again, and I know, I'm, I'm just saying, I took the Abutter's comments, and she had mentioned, when she came back up here the second time, that she said that he could very easily put it to the left of the house. So my comments were geared toward the Abutter bringing that proposal, you know, or consideration to the board to think about. And I just said, in terms of general, general characteristic of the neighborhood, that I feel that that would be more detrimental to the neighborhood in terms of the neighborhood as a whole, look of it, than where it is proposed, where the applicant has proposed to place it. And I also don't see the difference between eight feet versus, versus five feet. And while I understand we could turn it a little this way or that way, if it means he could keep his swing set that's bolted into the ground and more space for the kids, for children to play, three feet versus five feet isn't going to really do much in terms of the Abutter, um, in the view, with that much space in between, in my opinion. That's, that's, that's all I was saying.
Understood. And I think, I just was clarifying that if it is a no vote from me, that I was not considering the left-hand as an option. It's, it's based on maybe a little bit more, um, being worked with a little bit more within the general area that it is right now.
I think the only overall that would probably satisfy us all is I didn't even have to come before us for a variance, but he's here, and that's why we're here. And that's why we, as a group, have to do what we're doing right now, which is discuss it and hopefully try to, um, you know, make it work. And I just will, again, say, I don't know if we're taking into consideration again enough the amount of feet between the properties. This is not on top of another house. We are not on top of another person's house. He, they're not overlooking it, they're not going to see.
That's not the question before us. The question is the property line.
Well, that is the, that is a question when it comes to property line.
We, we've had many people come here, and we've all worked with those people to get some.
No, and I understand that, but how do we, how do we alleviate that without saying we don't need it, or we could have maybe 12 feet between us now? Maybe that's better? I, I don't see the difference between five and three feet. And I think if you gotta go 12 feet, he's not gonna be able to do that because of the position of the, the space there.
Building could be shrink, and it could be, it could be short, right? To accommodate, right? Most, most times when we, we discuss with some other people that come before us, they make accommodations. All I'm saying is, I made several suggestions, and everyone was just flatly turned down. It's gonna be this way or no way. So now we just vote.
And if I could clarify too, with the, I'm not really talking about a difference between five feet and eight feet. I know it may seem like semantics, but if the front of the garage right now is currently seven feet off the property line, move it three feet to the left, it's now 10 feet. Change, tilt the garage a little bit towards the back, shorten it, and now you can get to 10 feet in the back. To me, there is a big difference between five feet and 10 feet when you add in a soffit on top where water's running off of, heading towards that property line. For me, there is a difference between five feet and 10 feet.
I understand.
You know, it, it would be nice to maybe try to find some kind of accommodation here that is, is a little less aggressive towards the property line. And I feel like there's a solution there, and I just would hate to see this get flat-out denied, and then there's no way to come back and, and maybe have the property. Because trust me, I've, I've got four kids also myself. I know, I'm already running out of space in my driveway. I know, I know how tough it is, and I could see the hardship there. But I also do see the, the hardship of, of the direct neighbor as well, and, and how this is, you know, you know, we can look on paper, we can say, well, it's 200 feet away, but, you know, that's, that's somebody who has to live there every single day, and, and they're gonna know how close this is. And, and if there's a way to make everybody in the town happy and have it not be a hardship anymore, but also have it maybe not be the best-case scenario. Because right now, this is the best-case scenario. This is a cupcake with frosting on top. You know? You know, maybe we take a little bit of frosting off it, shrink it a little bit, tilt it a little bit. Kids still get their, their play area, they still have the patio. Instead of five feet from the property line, 10 feet, a little bit more. That's, that's, that's my concern. I do feel like there's, there's some room to work here that's not being attempted to, to happen.
And then we gotta be careful, as we, we talk about moving it, is that right now, the proposed garage is 15 feet away from the house, which I believe in, and also a dimension of requirement. So if we move it, it would have to be like to the back, to the corner.
Mr. Chair.
To the left.
Mr. Chair. And wholeheartedly, I respect everyone's opinion, yes, as a profession. He can't win at Superior Court. I'm telling you, I've been to Superior Court many, many times as a building official.
I know you have.
You cannot win this. If he takes an appeal, it's just not gonna be the frosting on this cake. It's gonna be much more than the frosting on the cake. Because the judge will rule in his favor. And that's my opinion and my experience at Superior Court.
We've had our discussions and deliberations. We'll be forward deliberations required. Once you take a roll vote, a roll call vote. Okay. Roll call vote. Okay. Well, it's only be the five members, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. John Hunt?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Ed?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And I'm gonna be a yes.
Just read it to.
That was fun. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, uh, pass the Groden Center, as submitted with a maximum of 10, 10, uh, students, with them, uh, making sure that the vision clearance on that corner be taken care of periodically. And that would be enforced by a code enforcement person. And of course, the fire marshal is gonna go through it, a building official, to restate the certificate of occupancy.
So it's 10 students?
Ten.
Ten children?
Ten children.
And isn't it the state fire marshal that takes it because of the?
Yes, because of it's, it's a DCYF situation.
So I'd say just bend it to say subject to all state and local permits.
I'll second that.
Do we have to?
Take this deliberation for me as long.
My, my only concern was when I was there today, I mean, they came whipping around that corner.
Yeah, and that, that vision clearance is extremely important.
They got enough of property.
Clear enough sight, sight of length.
They clear back 10 feet, you'll have.
That's what I'm saying, the vision clearance is, is extremely important.
No, not about.
And the students being bused in.
Yeah, there's no cars.
A, a big, a bus coming in and out, it's gonna be a lot more visible.
And I gotta say that the Groden Center, I've worked with in Providence, when I was in Providence many years. A very, very well-run facility.
That is not, that is not an easy task.
With all the safety features known to man, because I was in that building many, many, many times.
Okay, so right now, we have a rest approval. We had 10 students, up to 10 students clearing outside the traffic.
10 children.
10 children.
Yeah, we keep referring to students as 10 children.
And subject to all, uh, state approvals.
State and local.
State, state and local. Okay, do I have a, do we have a second?
Uh, John's second.
John's second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Any opposing? Next one. 75 part number Mike. Can you give an objection, please?
I make a motion that we approve as submitted.
Second.
amend the motion?
Yes, we need to amend it, um, to.
Yes. Subject to all state local permits.
Do we have to amend about the microbrewery? We're, we're approving a microbrewery, but it's a nano brewery, so we are, we're going to restrict the sale of, of beer.
No, you are, you are actually approving a use variance.
You're approving a use variance on this.
Yeah, so you are approving a use variance for this location to allow for a nano brewery, which is gonna have the requirements of the microbrewery except.
Except the 75% distribution.
Outside sales.
Yep.
And you're gonna limit it to, uh, only the sale of beer brewed, beer. Only packaged food to be sold. And I think the hours are limitations, and then you.
I was like 11 to 7, but, or 11 to 8, I mean.
Right. Like 11 to 9 or something, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And, um, they would have to return to this board for if they were gonna even attempt outside sales to anyone local.
Any increase? Or outside, or outside, uh, activities? So they can't be, they can't be outside drinking.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's, the, the area is not.
The area does not conducive to it.
The hill, I mean, the, I don't.
You'd be falling down. Okay, with that said, we have a motion. We have a second. With the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye opposed?
Make a motion that we close the meeting?
Hold on, we gotta do a general public.
Yes. So we gotta open this in advance?
Yes. So just open up the hearing to just general.
Okay, so we open the hearing to just the general public in case there is anyone here who has anything to say to us or talk about things.
Thank you. Please come by our.
Plan on. Okay. Close, motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Second?
Second, approved.
Okay.
Yep. Linda came off swinging.
Congratulations, Dallas, again. Congratulations, Mr. John.